Thanks, Mark.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Let's stand for the pledge. Let's go here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to start by appointing a clerk pro tem. So be it resolved in the absence of the district clerk, the Board of Education hereby appoints Ann Dineo, business manager, to serve as clerk pro tem for this meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Ann?
President Daley.
Here.
Vice President Hedley.
Here.
Trustee Clements.
Here.
Trustee McNaul.
Here.
Trustee Park.
Here.
I'd like to start by saying how nice it is to be here in person, to see you guys in the flesh, and to take a moment to thank our facilities director, Tim Walsh, for not just making it possible for us to be here today, but all of the work that Tim and his custodial team have been doing to learn new procedures, new protocols, new products, and making our school a safe place for not just us to be here, but for our students to be here shortly and our staff. So a big thank you to Tim and his team. And our next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, at 7:00 And here it says it'll be held in the auditorium. Is that a...
That's not a... We're not firm on that yet.
Okay.
If this room works, we may use this room again.
Okay, so our location will be a little flexible, but we will be here in our new in-person format. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is we have a few public hearings of some documents, and each item, we have three items, each one will have its own little public hearing, okay? So we'll go through each of them. So I'd like to call a call to order, a public hearing on the Code of Conduct, District Code of Conduct 2020 to 2021. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we are now in public hearing time. If Dr. Benante or Ms. Sniffin have any comments they'd like to share, if the board has any questions, if our public has any comments, now is the time.
I'll speak just briefly, and we'll go from there.
Please.
The Code of Conduct underwent an extensive review last school year, which was facilitated by Julia, and the board had reviewed those changes and moved to accept last year's Code of Conduct, as is part of our regular routine and procedures. Julia has also facilitated a review of the Code of Conduct for this school year, although the, now that we're working from a better base, I will say, than we had in years past. So the changes that were made to this year's Code of Conduct, or yes, this year's Code of Conduct, were minimal. With that, Julia, if there's anything more that you'd like to add, I would invite you to do so. Yeah, I think that covers it.
I noticed one tiny thing.
Tiny?
The summary still says 1920 on it.
We will make that change.
It's almost embarrassing to say, but I didn't, just noticed it.
Can I just add one more thing? So the amount of work that went into this, and I have stepped back significantly because I have other views beyond what is here, but the amount of work that went in was unbelievable, and this is so much easier to read, so much easier to understand than it was when my kids were here, for sure. But again, we have to always say, which I say every year, it is only as good as the consequences and the way that is, that is, it is held to, held to, the kids are held to those standards. There are always going to be lines in there that give the administration leeway. With the administration we have, I'm totally comfortable with that, but we always have to look and see if the administration that we have in place is not the administration that we want for the school, somehow someone gets in that's different, then there is a lot of leeway there. We just always have to remember that that's the way it's written, that's the way it's intentionally written, but there are some, there's a lot of leeway to, for the administration to say, okay, this is what the consequences say, but we can really change that.
I had a question, and it's a question for discussion, maybe, or some, I noticed the one key change about virtual or distance learning, and could you talk a little bit about how you expect the elements of the Code of Conduct to apply in a distance learning setting, or a virtual setting?
I'll start, and then, Julia, if there's anything that comes up, I know we spoke about this earlier this summer. So at base, we see that our students who are participating in remote instruction or school virtually are under the auspices of this Code of Conduct, no different than if they were in our classroom. Obviously, the types of behaviors that may occur in a virtual environment can vary, can vary quite widely as compared to what we would see on a campus each day. Some of what we see from a disciplinary perspective on campus won't come up in a virtual environment, but a virtual environment opens up a whole nother realm of things that can occur. So with that, just some examples from the spring that came up that were, we realized we want to make sure we establish with our students at the front end of the school year, you know, showing up to class on time. It's different in a virtual environment, but the standard or the expectation is fairly the same. Acceptable, we talked about backgrounds and virtual backgrounds and having a standard background that we utilize with the kids, so as to not bring up any, you know, glimpse into things that may be in the background of an environment that would subject our kids to scrutiny or bring up a potential disciplinary issue at all, although that was quite minimal. Acceptable dress, and there is a dress code in our, articulated in our Code of Conduct, and, you know, certainly that comes up if you're in a virtual environment or not, where there may be a tendency to roll out of bed in your pajamas and join class, that's not appropriate. So those are just a few of the things. And again, I would, I would qualify all these, you know, as relatively minor in the scheme of things, from what we saw in the spring and some, what we talked through this summer. And by and large, our standard, you know, the student standard, the standard Code of Conduct of our student body on a day-to-day basis is excellent. Yeah. And I just don't want that to be, to be lost in this discussion. But those are the types of things that we envision in a virtual or remote environment we're going to have to enforce. Julia, did anything else come to light through the spring that you feel were a part of the discussion as we got ready for this school year?
The only thing I can think of is the chat and active chat within class discussion and putting things in writing and, you know, not trying to change your name. I mean, we've put different things in place so that can't happen.
Yep.
In regards to, I'm not going to show my screen, you don't really know who I am because I'm going to put in a different name.
Sure.
Now, all students who are in this virtual environment have to sign on through the Haldane account, so it's their Haldane email, they can't adjust it. You know, so little things like that.
Yeah.
We didn't have any major issues, but just making sure that there's not disruption in the class when you're in a virtual environment.
It's interesting that the chat element just came up on the Zoom that you did on Thursday. There was somebody, just garbage in there. I'm assuming that the teachers have control over the participation and the visual of the students at all times.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, great.
And the interesting thing when you're, you know, we're all learning more about the tools that are there. So, you know, I'm seeing now on the backend, when the meeting's over, the chat doesn't go away. You know, I get a text file with the full chat in it. So if there's a need to go back through and address something, there's a record of everything that's occurring in these environments. So it puts us in a position to address it if needed.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions, comments? So then I'd like to declare the public hearing for the Code of Conduct closed, and we'll move on to the next. So I'd like to open a public hearing for the District Athletic and Extracurricular Code of Conduct 2020 to 2021. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So here we are with our Athletic and Extracurricular Code of Conduct. I'll turn it over to Dr. Benante or Ms. Sniffin if they have any comments, and then open it up to questions.
Julia, help me out here. I know last year we had a discussion about merging these two documents, and I think it was our goal to do so, but given everything that's going on, we really were not in a position to feel like we could facilitate that. So there still is an Athletic and Extracurricular Code of Conduct. I believe it is cross-referenced in the Code of Conduct, but long-term, we still have that goal of merging the two to the extent that we can. That makes sense in a lot of ways. We just still are presenting them as two separate documents because we were not able to do that, given everything else that we were preparing for, for the summer. We appreciate the board's flexibility and understanding with that. Other than that, again, minor changes, nothing too substantive. Julia, if there's anything more you want to add, I would invite you to. If not, we'll, we're happy to answer questions.
I thought the intent was to keep it separate so that every time a kid started an extracurricular activity or a sports team, they had to read it again and sign it with their parents, because we're holding the parents to the same...
Sure.
To the same level of standards.
That still would be the expectation. That to say, though, the, for us on our end, we see that these three elements are related. So the standard Code of Conduct for students, and then for students who are participating in extracurriculars or athletics, a separate Code of Conduct, but they're related in many ways. So having them together as one document is something that we feel makes sense in some ways. That's not to say, though, that they wouldn't review it at the start of every athletic season if a child was involved in a, on an athletic team and the parents wouldn't sign off on that, but just having one comprehensive document that speaks to the Code of Conduct, expectations for athletics or extracurricular participation is something that can occur. But still, we can still facilitate this in a way that addresses your point, Margaret. But for now, they are separate.
Any further thoughts, questions, comments? Okay, then I would like to declare the public hearing closed. Moving into our next one, the District Safety and Emergency Management Plan 2020 to 21. I'd like to open a public hearing on that document. May I have a motion, please? Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Benante, any comments?
Just as part of, remind the board and anybody who's watching, as part of our review of the district-wide safety plan, we do have a district-wide safety team that is part of reviewing this plan. This is a different group than the Safety Committee, and that's by New York State regulations. Actually, later on in the agenda, I believe you'll be moving to appoint the members of the district-wide safety team for the upcoming school year. That being said, this plan was reviewed at the conclusion of last school year in preparation for the start of this school year. And the proposed revisions are very minor. We work closely with Alteris, our safety and security consultant, on this plan. In the background of this, there are specific building-based plans as well that eventually, that at our next meeting will be presented to the Board of Education for review. However, the, there is not a public hearing for the building-based plans. There is only a public hearing for the district-wide plan, which is more general in nature. So other than that, I don't have any further comments. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I have a quick question. So if someone who was maybe coming to this cold would say, safety and emergency management plan would include a structure and a process to manage something like COVID. So how would you talk to whether those sorts of frameworks, not the specifics, are included in here or not?
They are now.
Okay.
Obviously, the situation with COVID, I think they're, it's entitled in the plan, the Infectious Disease Annex.
Yeah.
And in light of recent circumstances or situations, that was, that's new and speaks to the maintenance of continuity and obstruction for students and having a plan in place for that, as well as how the relationship between us and the Department of Health in maintaining certain health and safety standards on campus when there is a question or concern about some sort of infectious disease in the school, which is not unusual. COVID is not the first time, you know, schools have had to deal with concerns related to infectious disease. It does come up quite frequently in schools with other flu-like illnesses, and to the point where schools in the past have had to close because of that as part of their, their planning. I don't think it was, it was not common to see such things articulated in the district-wide safety plan in the past. It was just part of routine and procedure, but obviously, we've, we're beginning to do so now.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I'd like to declare the public hearing closed. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
So I'll turn it over to Dr. Benante for any comments and our school reopening updates.
Sure. So that's actually where I'll start and what I'll say with. First, it's great to see everybody again. I appreciate the board's ability to come in this week while we're still covered under the executive order to facilitate our meetings remotely. I know in speaking with Jen, we felt that it was important, as we're getting ready to welcome students back to campus, that the board be meeting in person, and I appreciate your understanding of that and your participation in today's meeting and then our retreat afterwards right next door. So I do want to speak, obviously, about our reopening plans. This has comprised the bulk of our work over the course of the summer, if not the last six months, and we continue to adapt to what's been, what continues to be a really dynamic situation. So for starters, I just want to point the board to the section of our website that has all of our reopening materials, communications on it, and that's if you were to log on to haldanschool.org, right at the top, there's a banner, 2020 School Reopening, click here. And this is where you'll see all of the communications from me, in addition to other resources that have been provided to us or that we're using as a basis in our planning. So on the right-hand side there, you'll see all of my, or our weekly updates. The seventh weekly update went home or went out yesterday. You will see links to our reopening plan with specific narratives about elements of our plan, if we felt it was necessary to call that out. As you know, we've been facilitating webinars, we have for some time now. However, we have the parent town halls that have been facilitated over the last few weeks listed here as well, a running Q&amp;A summary there based on the questions that we have received. And then we have specific elements of our health and safety plan that are listed here. Some are required by regulation or by executive order. Some are just protocols that we have in place to be helpful. I just want to point to one. BOSIS has been a great help to us over these last few months, so some of the questions I've received, well, what if? What if I have someone at home is quarantining and I'm in contact with that person? What's the decision-making process look like for that? So that would be a contact of a contact, number three here, and it will discuss what's our immediate action, who do we have to notify, what are the cleaning and disinfecting parameters in place, what does it create in terms of an action for the school, and then what's required in order for the school to go back into session? And there's a range of scenarios, four primary ones here, that are, that are articulated. So I just wanted to point our board to not only just this document, but the page in general. There's some archived material there from last school year. And what I'm finding is, as you're well aware of as trustees, this has been a running dialogue that we've had for six months. But as, if we were to say that in June, we started to talk about now reopening schools, again, that's a conversation and a dialogue that's been occurring for the last six weeks. As we're getting closer to the opening of school, people are now entering into the conversation at different points. So some folks, you know, at the end of last school year, tuned off from school, right? Enjoyed hopefully a nice summer and are now getting ready to come back to school, and they're just tuning into the conversation. So we're at a point in our planning where we may, where we're circling back a lot, obviously, to folks who are, you know, maybe just be tuning in, and, you know, it's fine, that's just the nature of how, how this goes, but we are trying to refer folks now to what may have already been answered, what we may have already discussed or been the basis of a town hall or a forum in some way, or one of the letters that I wrote, you know, back in, back in July, just so we can stay focused on our continued planning and preparation for the school year. We're going to be planning all the way and preparing all the way up to the first day, and we feel comfortable with that, but we really want this last week to be able to focus as best we can on the final details related to the opening of the school. So that's just that piece there on the website. Over the last couple of weeks, as other districts have announced that they're going to begin in an all-remote environment with the goal of opening school in October, we've been asked several times, well, why reopen at all if so many other schools in the area are closing or remaining closed or just going all remote, if you will, till October? Why is Haldane reopening? And I would first point to that, we're not the only ones, we're not going rogue here. No, we're not the only ones who are reopening. Every school in Putnam County as of today still plans to reopen to some extent in September. Our student, and there's really two pieces here that are the basis, as I see it, of our plan to reopen. One, our students have been without formalized face-to-face connection to one another and to our staff for six months now, and that's significant. And at some point this school year, in speaking with the Department of Health and the prospect of a bad flu season, it's likely that we're going to have to close again. I think that's a reality that we're going to face. It could happen very soon. My hope is it doesn't, that we, we have some base experience together, but it's likely that we're going to have to close at some point for one reason or another. So whatever time that we have with our students directly is precious, valuable time, and we should utilize that to the extent that we can. And we're at a position where we feel we can bring our students and our staff onto campus safely. It is going to be different, it's going to be very different than what it has in years past, but if we're able to have our students for two weeks, that, going to an all-remote environment and having two weeks with our students is very different than starting in an all-remote environment with our students, you know, right away in September. So we feel that this allows us to do our best work with our kids in whatever environment we're in later on this school year. As you know, we distributed a survey to families to indicate how many of our families were going to anticipate it, having their kids come onto campus or having their kids stay home, and 80% of our families as of a week ago indicated that they would be sending their children to school. 20% indicated that they would be keeping their children home. The majority of that 20% was elementary-age students, so about half, and then a quarter of that 20% at the middle school, the other quarter at the high school. So just to give you a sense of how that bared out among those respondents. So our focus right now remains to how we can best facilitate connection between our kids and our staff and learning for those students who are on campus and those students who are at home. We will be meeting with our staff next week to finalize details related to remote learning. As you can imagine, this is a difficult time of year to get into extensive planning around what's occurring at a classroom level when our staff is not with us each day. And that's, you know, we're all segue to the calendar and the need for continued calendar changes. So it's clear to us that we need more time at the start of the school year to adapt not only to the new routines and procedures that'll be in place, we knew that from the start, but also to work directly with all of our staff, not just the staff who's been very gracious in their time through the summer, but when we have all of our staff on campus for professional development, excuse me, for their professional development needs. This is consistent with, I think, what we've said from the start, that a phase-in process to some extent is going to be needed to do this well. However, we're now refining what that phase-in process will look like to put us and to put the other adults who come onto campus each day in the best position to work with our kids. So I communicated those changes to our community yesterday. These are in anticipation of your action today, and I want to be obviously respectful of that, but we do feel that we will need additional half-days at the start of the school year. That allows us to space out further the number of students who are coming onto campus each day and to have dedicated time with smaller groups of students to show them the new routines and procedures that are in place, and then on the other half of the day, to give us an opportunity to hear from our staff, how is it going? What's working? What is not? And then to have a segment each day that's dedicated to their continued professional development and planning to work again with two different groups of students, students who are on campus and students who are not. So we feel that's respectful of our staff, we feel that's respectful of our students, obviously, because it's going to be some time, it's going to take us a little time, I should say, before, for them to learn new habits and new routines on campus. And it also is introducing all of our students to a remote learning scenario in those first two weeks that we think at some point they're all going to have to, we're going to have to default to. Again, my hope is that's down in the road, down the road, but it could be at any time, and we have to be prepared for that. So there's a lot of adjustments that everyone has to be prepared to make as we go into what's going to be a really unique school year. Now, as we look ahead to next week, which is our final full week before the start of the school year, we are going to be looking to finalize staff accommodations and leave-of-absence requests. Want to make sure our board and our community is familiar with that. With the prospect of opening schools, we have to be mindful of the health and safety of our staff. Several staff members may have pre-existing conditions that put us, that we have to work through with them to make sure that they, they have the appropriate accommodations to work safely with our students. For some of our staff, that's going to necessitate working remotely, meaning they will actually not come onto our campus, they will work remotely in some way. We also have staff, because of what's occurring regionally, that are in a difficult position with childcare, and because of that, they may need to take a leave of absence to care for their own children, and that is allowed under the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, to take a leave of absence from school for a period of time so that they can care for their own children. So we're working through that with our staff. So the, the human resource needs obviously become front and center to make sure that the staff who are here are accommodated, and the staff who anticipate not being able to be here, that we've made the appropriate accommodations for instruction to occur in those classrooms if there's a pending leave-of-absence request that we have to manage. We have our final faculty meetings and parent meetings scheduled for next week. I know our principals are anticipating holding a building-specific parent forum. So at the district-level forums, you know, we're trying to stay focused on district-level routines and procedures, but there's a level of detail that a parent wants to know just about their children's experience in a school. So Julia, Mary Ann, and Christine will have individual parent meetings. It's not to say, by the way, that they've been answering parent emails and phone calls all along, which probably number in, you know, close to the hundreds by now, in specific questions or concerns that our families have. So we'll continue to do that. We'll just take a slightly different approach to it next week to make sure that parents have a forum to connect virtually as well. We'll be finalizing our building setup. As you walked into the high school today, you saw some wayfinding down, you saw some different signage that was in place. Certainly, as you're leaving today, you can, we can take a peek, and you can see the classroom setups that, here at the high school. There are some final details here, as well as in the main building, that we're preparing for through next week, just to wrap that up. And then, I believe it's Wednesday, Jen, if I'm not mistaken, where we're also going to facilitate a walkthrough of these building spaces with our PTA leadership, our CSEA leadership, our Faculty Association leadership. Jen will be a part of that on behalf of the board, just to answer additional questions or concerns that, that may be had, which range from, you know, you know, really big-picture stuff to very, I don't want to say minute, but very detail-oriented things about our ventilation system and whatnot. We've answered a lot of questions on ventilation in these buildings, so, and it's understandable. So obviously, Tim would be a part of that, and we want to be prepared for the range of questions that we may encounter from our, from our stakeholder groups at that time. So with that, I'm still encouraged by the fact that September 3rd is right around the corner. We're going to have an opportunity to reconnect with our kids in just a little over a week now. I'm looking forward to that. I know our administrative team is as well. And then over that next 10 days, we will have had the opportunity to have all of our students back on campus in some way, shape, or form, with the final, or the first day of school being the following Monday there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. That's a very broad overview. I know many of you have participated in the parent forums or been paying attention to the communications that are going out. Again, as I frame this as a running dialogue that's had, we've been having over the last eight weeks or so as it, with respect to the opening of school, but I want to leave this space to answer any additional questions now.
For the students that are going remote, are we comfortable with their internet connections, that they have hotspots, that they have access to devices, all those things?
Right.
I mean, we have had such bad luck with the internet, especially after the last storm, that, you know, how are we going to hold these kids to the that, you know, how are we going to hold these kids to the code of conduct that they have to appear at a certain time if optimum goes down? If dad gets called into a meeting? If there's only two devices in the household and there's four kids? Are we comfortable that we're in a space where everyone's taken care of?
Yeah, so part of our survey to families was to indicate, do they need, does a family need additional devices? Because there may have been, and that's a different, a different position as we move more towards a synchronous experience with kids than where we were in the fall, where kids could have accessed their instruction at any point during the day, and they may have only needed one device in the home. So we did take a tally of families that need additional devices, and we do feel that we can, that we have enough devices for those families. It did, we did have to purchase more Chromebooks through the course of the summer, so that was anticipated, and we'll be distributing those Chromebooks to families next week, and we're in contact with them. The second piece of that is the internet piece, and we got into this in the spring, Margaret, where we knew that there were families without access, so we did purchase the Jetpacks, which provide families with, or a student with wireless access that can connect with a device, and we have enough of those to account for the families that did not have reliable internet at that time. But you bring up a good point. Well, what if, even all that, the internet goes out? And that's a problem, and that's something that we have to, that speaks to one of those scenarios right now, that we don't have final details around, that we need some time with our staff to work through that, because it speaks to having a consistent expectation, K-12, for how that's handled. We don't want, you know, eighty teachers having a different approach to how we're going to address something like that, and it speaks to one of those, you know, fine details now that are really important, but that we realize we need additional time when we have all of our staff together, which really is, you know, after September, to work through, okay, what's the plan going to be for this? What's our district policy on how to handle such a thing? Rather than us just establish it as a leadership team and put it out there. You know, so we're, that's where we're at at this point with it.
It's almost like the internet being out is like the new snow day call.
Yeah. Yeah, and it could, you know, it could be a teacher who lives in White Plains, and they could be out of the internet, or someone who lives in Poughkeepsie. So it could be the teacher that's out, and then what do you do on the school end? And they may not find out, or it may go out, find out until the last minute, or may go out during the class. Like, that could be a huge problem.
Happened to us at a board meeting.
Yeah.
It's disruptive, and it can really get in the way of how things go. So, yeah, so that's a final detail. I think as a base starting point, though, when it comes to devices and when it comes to connectivity, we're covered there, and that's, that's an area that you see a lot of districts concerned about, and that's a basis for some of their decision-making, because they're not even there yet with devices or having connectivity options for kids. So the good news is, we have good system in place, and we've accounted for that, and now we're at that next level of planning, well, those what-if scenarios that may or may not play out.
A question. Thank you for the email, I think it was last night, on the outlines of the remote learning. I'm trying to be careful with words, because we have hybrid, virtual, in-school, remote, so remote.
Yeah, and for the group, we're trying to use remote for anybody who's at home accessing.
Got it. Perfect.
There's virtual, there's a lot of different words.
Exactly. I would love you, if you could, to talk through a little bit, because the sentence that I found really exciting, in a way, and I also realize the stress is on the teachers, is the students in K through 12 will participate in synchronous classroom experiences. Is that really interesting in terms of moving from an asynchronous to a synchronous environment? Coupled with your sort of outline of how a general class period and instruction period would work that you talked about on Thursday, teacher instruction, group facilitated practice of the individual?
Correct.
Could you talk a little bit about, I think one of the questions was sort of K through five, how you, how you see this working? And so my, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I would like you to sort of say, how do you see this coming together?
Sure. Well, first, I'm careful with how much I describe of it, because I still feel that there's, that we're, well, one, we're still meeting with our teachers next week to talk a little bit more through it. So I'm careful, and I've made the mistake sometimes of not, not first talking about some caveats and going right into a description, because I want to be, with respect, out of respect for our teachers, I don't want to venture into describing something, and now that's what we're doing, when we, you know, when I've said to them, we're not quite there yet. But I spoke on Thursday, as you said, that there are various, there's typically a standard process to a lesson, and there's typically, on any given day, there's a number, there's four lessons that are being provided to students. There's an ELA lesson, there's a math lesson, a science, and a social studies lesson. And that may vary day by day, as we know, and some of that is integrated, and so it's not as straightforward as that, but as a, but as a starting point, that's what the day generally looks like for our kids. And then there's some activities surrounding that. There's special, and there's lunch and recess, obviously, other things. So if we were to look at the base of the day as a series of four lessons occurring at specific points, we have the ability and the capability, there's a camera up there now in each of the, that's similar to each of our classrooms, to allow our students to access various lesson segments during the day synchronously, meaning I can come in, if Mrs. Sniffen says that our math lesson is at nine o'clock on that day, I can now tune in at nine o'clock, and I can be a part of the introductory part of that lesson, which is where the critical content or the new content is typically introduced, in addition to the review from the previous day. That then allows me, and Mrs. Sniffen may have the discretion to, at that point, say, okay, I've now charged our class with independent work from that point forward, the rehearsal, if you will, of that content that was introduced, and that's why we've been careful to say that anybody who's remotely, there is an expectation that there will need to be parent support of that, and it would be for that second part of the lesson. Now, Mrs. Sniffen may decide that she wants to keep the kids connected to that class for the whole lesson, but we see that as something that would be up to Mrs. Sniffen as the classroom teacher. And we want to leave flexibility there for our teachers to determine, you know, what lesson segments and routines do they want the students who are working remotely to tune into? Where would that be beneficial? And there may be parts where it's not. So that, we want to, again, try to continue to work through with our teachers. But generally, that is how the day will flow for our kids. So there might be a nine o'clock piece, a ten o'clock piece, an eleven o'clock piece, so there will be a schedule that's articulated by the classroom teacher to those students. We have the technology now to make sure that our teachers are able to connect with our kids in that way. We feel that the reliability of that technology, we're at a better place now than we would have been this time last year. We've increased our bandwidth, we've, obviously, we've incorporated new technology into our classrooms, now familiarizing our staff to that technology, because it didn't exist last June, or last March, whenever our staff was previously here. They kind of worked through some things through the spring, and I think there was some good learning that went on there, but it was a big adaptation. So having consistent and clear expectations in place on the part of, with our staff that are established is something that we need more time to do. And we'll have some time next week, and again, that those first two weeks of the school year, by way of making these calendar changes, are a further opportunity for us to refine the remote learning schedule for our kids, but also structures and systems that work for our staff. So it's definitely a transitional period for us. I don't mean to be too long-winded on it, but that's some of my thinking as it relates to it.
I think that's exactly right, in terms of making a very clear outline for parents who are at this point, at this decision point, and saying, what does a remote actually look like? So I think that, the extent to which that that can become very trans, as transparent as possible, given the, given the, I certainly understand that every lesson is not exactly the same in terms of teacher instruction, practice, and individual, I totally get that, but that there will be, when the teacher is instructing to the entire class, whether you're sitting in the room or sitting at home, you have, you will be participating in that, and you will be watching that. And then, as that breaks out into guided, that will, that is subject to differences.
A key piece here, that I think, you reminded me of something, John. I think what I hear from families right now, and it comes up with remote learning, just want to take the board back, in July, we were not under the impression we would have to be doing both of these things. So, so just, you know, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, we thought we were going with, in one direction or the other, either school was going to be open, and hey, you can come to school or not, and, or school was going to be closed, and we were going to be in an all-remote environment. What became clear through those latter weeks of July, early August, through the governor's comments, is that there is an expectation that we were doing both. And I still don't, and there is some elements of the regulation or the reopening guidance we receive, where you can read into it and say, okay, we were going to have to accommodate both families, but it was not explicit from the start that we would be doing it in this way. So it's a big lift for us. You know, we went into the summer, you know, in one mindset, and, you know, now we're literally trying to build two school, two different school experiences for our kids, with, in the background saying, you know what, we're probably all going to have to default to remote at some point. So that has influenced some of our thinking, too, in that, did we want to create a separate, a totally separate experience for the kids who are working remotely? And, you know, we resolved to no, but there was a period of time where we were really thinking we should. We resolved to no, because we think all students are going to be in that scenario at some point, so now you have two different kind of groups, but they're in a similar environment. So we see that all-remote as, if we're ever, if and when we get to that point, well, now the class will be together again. They'll just be together in a remote environment. And likewise, if, let's say, there's, I don't know what's going to happen in, you know, by January, if there's a vaccine or not, but if there ever is that prospect of where we are out of a COVID crisis, whenever that may be, if it happens this school year, we see this as a mechanism now to have students come back into their natural class environment that they've been a part of all along, as opposed to have had them in separate classes or cohorted together outside of, you know, from the start. So if I'm, again, in Mrs. Sniffen's class remotely, and now my family's comfortable with me coming back to school, I'm going back to Mrs. Sniffen's class with the kids who I've seen perhaps all along, whereas we were going down and we gave it, you know, some good attention, having all of these students who are working remotely, maybe having their own designated teacher, or having a totally separate, you know, remote experience, but, well, then what if we're now foregoing that remote experience because it's safe to come back into school? Well, now we have to reintroduce, that's another transition that student has to make, back into Mrs. Sniffen's class. It's like being, you know, the new kid in class again. And, you know, there's, that can go smoothly, but that, those types of transitions for kids generally are not good. You know, we try to avoid that. The more a kid is transitioning between educational environments, especially at the elementary level, tends to have a negative impact, whether you're moving, or whether you're switching classes, or whatever that is. So we try to limit those. So we see this as, you know, keeping what's in the best interest of kids long-term in mind, obviously, in a really unique scenario.
I think it's, it's really interesting, because it can make your place much more fluid in a very consistent way. Like, it answers some of the questions, it could answer, I'm not, again, I'm not going to put words in anybody's mouth, but it could answer some of the questions that I've seen come up, which is, if my kid is home quarantined, can they participate remotely? Well, if it works in the way that you're describing, whereas there's a smooth transition, you're in a cohort, some of the cohort is here, some of the cohort is home, there is a different, I will be the first to put my own biases on the table, that I think there will be a difference in the educational quality for a number of the reasons that you've discussed, but that transition, like, you no longer have to fall out in the same way.
You just brought up a really important point that I didn't mention. If, so, we don't know what may provoke a quarantine or a student quarantining, and some of that may be because of things that happen here at Haldane, but it certainly could occur for things that happen outside of Haldane. You know, maybe, you know, I don't know. You had contact with somebody, your doctor has advised you, you know, maybe you're with a family member or whatever, your doctor's advised you to stay home. So, you know, in our mindset, and again, we've had a little bit more time as a leadership group just to kind of chew on this and think about it together, but it may necessitate now a fourteen-day absence from school. So we saw this as, you know, it was inevitable that our classroom teachers were going to be in a position, we didn't want to take those students now who were in school but now quarantining for fourteen days, and try to put them in a group that they've never been a part of. So for us, it's, and by regulation, we have to accommodate those kids. So we could do it in one of two ways. We can now have the teacher, you know, get work together and whatnot, no different than would happen if a child was, you know, absent from school, or we can try to set up a structure for that student to still now participate and have in the routine of the classroom. And, you know, it's a big unknown, but it's a significant, it could be significant. And so we see this as an opportunity for the kids to stay attuned to what's going on in their regular classroom, and then hopefully come back, obviously, after whatever period of quarantine they may be in. So it's, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was something, that was a detail that we were thinking about, well, what if our kids have to quarantine? Where do we put them at that point? And it seems inevitable that that's just going to create, it's going to be a problem that's going to have to be solved at the classroom level, and having this technology and structure in place seems to address also that scenario, for as long as that we're in this type of environment.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I have a few things.
Yeah.
Two are short, one's longer, but I'm going to keep it short. One idea about the website, since you mentioned, like, sometime, some people are entering into this for the first time, and I know you've sent emails home that say, start with this plan, or start with this, but you might want to have it on the website, like, just like, where to start? You know, it's so much information. I mean, that's actually what I find. It's so much information, but just to say, like, you know, if this is your first time here, you know, like, start with these documents.
That's helpful. Thank you, Peggy.
The other thing is, and I'm, Swift Reach does texting, right? Tech, texting?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. So you can imagine, right, like, if we do have an internet outage, right, that's how we can communicate with families. I'm sure you all have already thought about that. The third thing I want to say is that, like, you know, I've been studying online learning as long as pretty much anybody. We don't know what to do in this situation, right? There's no clear guidance for what to do. And what I'm so impressed about, I mean, really so, really truly appreciative and impressed about, about what you all have done, is that you've really thought carefully about what do we know what's best, you know, what's best for kids? I don't know if I would have come up with this virtual option, but in retrospect, it makes so much sense to me, and it also makes sense to me, like, having kids whose families are comfortable with them coming to the school, you know, having kids come in, even if it's just for a few weeks, you're creating what we know are these critically important, you know, social-emotional connections to the teachers and to their classmates. I mean, it's, it's, it's really, you know, it's, I really, I mean, I really am so impressed, you know, and, you know, at the same time, I think it's also important that we acknowledge that folks, you know, folks may have different opinions about what should have happened. I come away from this conversation feeling really very confident that the administrators and the teachers and the community members, but I think primarily, probably, the administrators and the teachers who've worked on these ideas, have taken everything they know about what makes for positive, impactful, beneficial education, and incorporated it into this plan. It's a crappy situation, right? Like, you can't get away from the fact that it is really detrimental in some ways to our children in particular, but I really, I do come away from this and feel, you know, hopeful, you know, and, but mostly appreciative, like, of how thoughtful it is. Like, the idea that a kid might, you're right, now we can make these transitions without them being as disruptive as they might have been, and that's, I think that's really important for this year.
I have one thing, and that's, sort of picking up on what Peggy was talking about, I would say that since, as you mentioned, a majority of our students that are remote are on the elementary level, that it's those social-emotional bonds that we're talking about that are probably most at risk and not being established, which will prevent the next, necessary next step. So I'm just curious, it's not a question to answer necessarily, but I would imagine parents have questions about, what are the mechanisms that might be in place so that my child has the opportunity to build a relationship with the teacher, for instance? And I would anticipate those questions are coming down, and it might be best to know, even on the website, like, you know, where do I go to find that particular information as it evolves? And is it best to ask, you know, should I go through guidance, or should I go through the primary teacher? Or if I have certain requests that I want to make, who might be the most appropriate person to discuss those with, just as we move forward, so. And I think in the, in the spring, because we were all in it and those relationships were developed, it was quite easy for parents offline to sort of have their own ways to establish and maintain those relationships. And since, I think we'll be starting with a little bit more reticence about that, because some of those of those, even though it's a small district, there might be new kids in those classrooms and, um, just if there are mechanisms in place where we can create those social bonds outside of the classroom too, I think everyone's experience is going to be improved, like, once we are finally all together.
That's helpful. One thing that, um, you're reminding me of Sean, and we have to sort this out next week, and this is for our families and our staff who are, who tune into, uh, these, uh, these forums, is that in order for our teachers to best connect with their students who are learning remotely, beyond what is occurring, um, day-to-day in the lesson format that we discussed, is they need time, uh, uh, to do that. So, uh, and I know, so we have to sort through, how are we giving them time to do that? So typically, you know, the scheduled day is, you know, for an elementary kid, uh, eight forty-five to three o'clock-ish, you know, somewhere in there. And, uh, we will have to look at our school day schedule and really through a critical lens with our staff to say, what portion of this day can we say, you know what, while you've had, uh, the kids in the class have had your, you know, exclusive attention, uh, because that will occur, um, at various points, when will the students at home have your full attention and exclusive attention as well? So, um, I do anticipate, and then where are the kids who, um, who are not with you or who were with you physically, um, uh, where are they then when that happens? So it very may necessitate, you know, a shift in that day, um, schedule, uh, to make sure that we're securing time for the remote learners, uh, in the way that I think you described, or in one way, um, because I think there's other opportunity, you know, that certainly there, um, uh, just like we've secured the time for the students who have participated, uh, uh, or who are present each day. Because at some point, all of our kids are coming back. I hold on to that. So, and we want to make sure that when they all come back and they're all together again, they're on as good a footing as they can be.
What kind of support have the teachers gotten in terms of training for the remote learning? And is there anything out there to help the parents support their children if they're remote, if they're learning remotely?
So on the teacher end, nothing directly from the district as of now, other than systemically, it's, uh, it's individual, uh, you know, a teacher may have individual questions or concerns that they've worked through, uh, with our district support staff or with our, um, uh, with other support staff we have in place at the district level. They certainly have had access to the variety of professional learning, uh, opportunities that are available to them through BOSEs and through other BOSEs. And I don't want this to come off as critical, but this is part of a problem with the school calendar set up the way it is, because we lose our staff for two months and we can't direct staff to training. So while it's there and we can point them to it, we can't mandate that they go. Um, and, and again, that's not, I don't want that to sound critical, it's just a reality that we have, um, as, um, you know, as a, as a school district. Every public school district does for the most part. So that's why we see the need to have more time on the front end of the school year to ensure that all of our staff, so not just the folks who've decided to take it upon themselves and, uh, you know, participate in, you know, five or six trainings this summer. We have teachers who have, you know, I see those, uh, come through. Uh, but all of our staff have had the dedicated time to walk through with us, um, you know, the resources that are available to them, how, how to utilize these resources and then answer questions that they may have, so that remote learning component, um, or the synchronous piece, they've had time to work through it. Not just with us too, uh, because some of the best professional learning that I think occurs among our teachers is when they've had opportunities with each other. Um, and again, the only time we have dedicated to have them all together is, uh, starting on now August 31st. So that's why we added the conference day. So our staff will have three conference days and then they will have seven half-days. And we feel that, uh, that's a lot of time. And granted, the part of that will be adjusting and meeting your kids and all of that, but having, uh, that base of time should be, you know, plenty, uh, to at least get us in a really good place, uh, with, uh, how to manage the synchronous learning expectations and how to, uh, facilitate good instruction or quality instruction for the students who are working remotely at home. So to answer your question, in the short term, there hasn't been any consistent, uh, professional learning that's been provided for all staff through the summer. It would have been by the direction that our staff has chosen individually to participate in it, and some of that certainly has occurred. Uh, the time we have dedicated for all staff starts on the 31st.
And for the parents?
Oh, thank you. Uh, the parent end, uh, that's a good point. I, I don't know, uh, we have, Leah, for example, was providing, uh, connections for parents, uh, through the, through the spring. I do not believe we have provided anything of that in that, uh, way through the summer months, but that's not to say that we couldn't do it at the start of the school year, um, and through that initial phase of, uh, of reopening. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. That's a great point.
Um, I just want to echo what Peggy said, and it's something that, um, Phil, I think you said it either in an, in an email letter or maybe it was at a board meeting, but at some point, in one of your many communications, at some point, um, you started talking about the, the district and you started talking about that each child is the district's child.
Yes.
Each, each kid. So whether that family determines that, uh, remote learning, homeschooling, coming back, somewhere in between is right for them, they're still the district's children. And that we're committed to making sure that each of those children feel welcomed at Haldane, feel supported by Haldane, um, in any way possible. And I feel like this plan, as Peggy, um, so nicely said, really makes that clear. Like, I feel like it really puts it into action, um, that we're, there's been an evolution, as you said, through these conversations and through the weeks, but we've gotten to a point where the plan really, um, supports every kid and every situation. Um, and every situation that we don't even know is going to happen, there's, uh, even a plan in place for the unknowns, right? And there's that flexibility in place for the unknowns. And I think that that is something that, um, that you, uh, as our district leader and the administration should be really proud of, that, um, I know it hasn't been an easy evolutionary process.
It hasn't.
Um, but, um, we've got, I think, I feel like you guys have gotten there, uh, and we've gotten there in a, in a really, um, um, really beautiful way. So, um, I'm proud of us.
I am too. I, you know, I, I really am. Our team has worked so incredibly hard over the last, uh, six months in very different scenarios, you know? It's, it's like, like we all have, you know? The, the evolution of the crisis has been unique and the school's adaptation to it has been unique. So I'm really, I, I think, given where we are right now, and, and obviously I'm a little more attuned to what's going on in other districts, just because I talk to them all the time, I feel really good about where we are, um, uh, given the time and the resources that we've been able to commit to this. Um, and, uh, I feel confident that our staff is going to be in a position to do their best work with kids early on this school year. I don't know, you know, it's, but it's going to be an adaptation. And I think that's, um, that's what's unique for us, is that we're, uh, very used to having a very set structure and routine to how we do things, all the way up to that first day of school. Um, and if you were to look back, you know, in our notes, and I'm sure if, you know, our teachers were, you know, there's a, there's a high level of predictability to schools. Um, and, and that's part of what school is, is to have that very predictable nature to it. And what's tough for us and for many of our staff, uh, is that this is, um, there's a, we're preparing for the known and the unknown, as you said Jen, and, uh, and that's uncomfortable for, um, for folks, it's uncomfortable for me, uh, the, the unknown elements, uh, you know, when you've worked for decades, uh, um, at this point, you know, with a very set structure and routine to the way we operate. So, um, you know, we just need to, we need to accept that, that there's going to be some things that are outside of our control. I think the board gets it and I appreciate the board's attention to the, again, what's been a real, uh, long dialogue, but, um, you know, that's, uh, but that's, to speak to the last piece, I know there's concerns out there, you know? I, I, I empathize, I, you know, for my own children, I have concerns about their return to school. So it, it's, um, we're not, you know, examining this in a vacuum by any means. We all bring our own, um, uh, concerns and anxieties, I think, to, uh, to the school year. And, uh, for some, it, it's, you know, the, the desire to have very specific answers to scenarios that we may encounter. And I've just said, I have to say confidently that we, there's just some things we don't have the answers to yet and we won't. And, um, it pains me to say that because I think in my role and a building principals' role, you know, we're the ones who are sought out for answers to those types of scenarios or questions, and we just can't give an answer to every question, you know? There is just an unknown element to what, uh, what we're in right now. And, uh, but as a framework, as you said, to bring it back, I do think that our framework is good. We need to fill in some gaps on that framework now over the next few weeks. And we're looking forward to having the opportunity to do it with our staff now, um, as they make their way back on the campus. So thank you for that.
Okay, I feel like we're kind of wrapping up our special presentation. Is there any further, anything? Okay, um, communication from the public. Julia, do you have anything you'd like to communicate with us? Cecilia, do you have anything you'd like to say? No, okay, moving on. Our information reports are there for, um, anybody to review going into consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion? I'm so happy to see so many substitute teachers on here.
Yeah.
Thank the Lord.
Hold on one second, I just lost my place here. Is this where we're appointing the coaches? Can you just talk a little bit to the sports and how they're going to be paid if sports don't, don't pan out?
Right, so we, we'll have some decisions to make, and I would remind the board that just, uh, because there's an appointment here, it does not mean that necessarily, one, we're going to have athletics, uh, that's not determined by us, so we still have to see how things play out there. Last spring, uh, we forewent having our coaches engage our kids, uh, in any way in a virtual or remote environment. Uh, I think that's something, uh, we need to talk about with our coaches, once we're all back on campus, do they desire to? Um, and if so, then, um, are we willing to make a commitment to that? Because again, from a social perspective, it's really helpful to some of our kids to have that forum, uh, to connect. Obviously though, it's very different than competing on, uh, an athletic field. And the same goes for our, uh, extracurricular, uh, activities as now, so, or activities as well, excuse me. So for now, I'm recommending that we go ahead and appointing our coaches, so we're ready to go if, if sports are opened up, uh, later in September. Um, and so our extracurricular activities, um, again, are ready to begin, uh, in September. Uh, but I do think that we will be circling back to this if there is a decision, for example, by NIPSVA, uh, to cancel fall sports, uh, and then to delay, there's a couple of different ways that could go. Is the season going to be delayed till later in the school year, which is up for discussion right now, or is the season being canceled outright? As of right now, even if NIPSVA, uh, were to, um, delay, further delay the fall sports season, I do believe that it's still opened up for football, for example, or volleyball, uh, to have a season later on, uh, in the school year. So the appointments would still be relevant. A lot still to play out though, in athletics. So I think we're appointing for now, but we'll have to have a discussion about what, if our staff's actually going to be engaging our kids, um, after the start of the school year.
And the pay, and the salaries according to their contract?
Correct.
Will go according with that?
Correct. So last year, for example, we were in season and we actually started a spring sports season for, uh, a week or two for varsity athletes. So we paid a prorated, uh, salary based on that contact time with kids. Some districts decided to have their coaches continue to engage the kids, even if they weren't, even though they weren't, uh, competing, all the way up through the season and paid the full stipend. That's something we have to determine whether or not we want to occur. And I can see reasons to do it and I can see reasons perhaps not to. It depends on, you know, which lens you're looking at it through. So I would, I would seek to engage the board more of a discussion about that. We'll have time to.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
I'm just saying, congratulations to Ms. Stein.
Yeah, so Ms. Stein was a, uh, part-time music teacher for us, many folks, and she was a point eight. Um, and now with, um, an opening there, we've decided that, um, uh, Ms. Stein, um, uh, has expressed interest and we've decided to have her in the full-time music, uh, position going forward. So she's now a probationary employee for us, um, just as an FYI. Um, and yes, congratulations to her. We're happy to have Jessica here.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Going into new business, uh, the approval of the CSE CPSC placement recommendations. Ms. Dineo?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The district-wide safety team, Ms. Dineo?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following individuals to be part of the district-wide safety team for the 2020, 2021 school year. Dr. Philip Benante, Ms., Mr. John Hedland, Ms. Christine Jammon, Dr. Mary Ann Silke, Ms. Julia Sniffin, Ms. Tara Rounds, Mr. Dave, David Goddard, Mr. Tim Walsh, Deputy Amanda Collier, Mr. Joe Virgadamo and Mr. Ralph Faloon.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Congratulations, John. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the code of conduct that we had our public hearing on earlier.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Haldane School District Code of Conduct for the 2020, 2021 as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The athletic and extracurricular code of conduct.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Haldane School District Code of Conduct for the 2020, 2021 as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Safety and emergency management plan?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Haldane Central School District Safety and Emergency Management Plan for 2020, 2021.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The 2020, 2021 school calendar amendments.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following amendments to the 2020, 2021 school calendar, September 8th, 2020 through September 11th, 2020, are designated as student half-days with professional development in the afternoons.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Um, and this is the additional half-days, but the previously half-days that we had already changed are still in effect.
Jen, and I just want to point that this was provided to parents yesterday. This is just an overview of, uh, the schedule for students who will be coming to campus on each of those half-days, which we've staggered. Generally, we'll be operating at about one-third of our total student body, generally, um, on, on these days. Uh, but you can get a sense that we want to give each of our kids a couple of days on campus and then there's a few days off campus. We have prioritized bringing our kindergarten, first grade students onto campus more frequently. Uh, that being said, the last two half-days actually have them off-campus in the remote environment. So we figured we would give our K1 kids, uh, actually, uh, four consecutive days on campus. Uh, they typically take a little longer to adapt to routines and procedures to begin with, let alone the new ones that we'll have in place. Uh, but this is just an overview. It is linked on our, it's linked in the letter on our website. I don't believe we yet have it as a standalone, uh, but this is just a different view, um, because you only, I think, have the calendar in front of you.
Yep. Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Sideman's administrative internship.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby appoint Ms. Melissa Sideman to the position of administrative intern for a two-semester fieldwork internship.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a note. I don't know in the past how administrative internships have been handled by the board, but given the fact that an administrative intern may be handling some administrative responsibilities with the support or under the direction of another administrator, that's a new role that that person is assuming for the school year. So, just feel that should, the board should have the opportunity to act upon that, given that you may come to have interactions with Ms. Sideman or our community may, in her administrative internship role throughout the course of the school year, so.
Thank you. Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fund balance. We have a, we have a fund balance to talk about.
Yes, so if I can start and then I'll turn it over to Ann, is that okay?
Hmm?
And I guess where it fell on the agenda is, was up for discussion, so we just decided to put it here. So, the board took great care last school year in preparation of presenting a budget to the community, obviously amidst a pandemic. And we spoke about school budget and what to do and what actions to take extensively through the months of really March, April, and May in presenting a budget to the community. And the board had made a decision and accepted the administration's recommendation to put a budget to the, to vote, to the full levy limit. And that was approved by our community and we're incredibly thankful for that. Obviously, we anticipated through the spring that there were areas where we were assuming increased costs, but that there were also many areas where we were spending less by nature of the school just not operating on a day-to-day basis and how it normally would. So, with that, we've come to a point where we do have excess fund balance. This is also, though, there's a connection here to the tax rate and setting the tax rate for the upcoming school year, which is also on for action today. So, I'm, Ann's going to provide a little bit more of an overview on the fund balance, as well as answer, provide the board with information as it relates to the tax rate. And really, we just need from the board, we have some ideas, but we're going to need to ask the board to help us arrive at a conclusion on what to do with the excess fund balance. I think there's some opportunity here. So, Ann's going to start with taking the lead on this and we'll go from there.
Am I in the way if I sit here?
You want to swing with me?
Fine, you're fine, actually.
All right, okay, thank you. So, everyone has a hard copy of this summary of the fund balance projection. And this is really summarized because when you, all of the information that goes into this, all of the revenues and all of the expenditures, it's boiled down to one line on here, but if I gave you everything, we'd be here till 2:00. So, this, the slides that I'm going to go through break this up for you. I know that we talk a lot about fund balance, but I don't think that we ever really got into what it really is and what are the components. This is basically all of the steps that we're going to walk through. There are all the components of, of this sheet that's in front of you. The first part is the top, and that's showing us fund equity as of June 30th, 2019. Now, keep in mind that reserves are not, there's no entries to reserves through the whole year. So, where you start on July 1st is the number that we start working with on June 30th of 2020. So, there's, we're, this is our starting point. No entries, like I said, are made for fund balances or reserves. It's all done at the end of the year. And it's broken down, our total fund equity is just under $4 million as of June 30th, 2019. And that's broken out into our various reserves. And later, instead of listing them all out again, you're going to see that $1,77607. I just wanted you to know where it came from when you see that. From that, we subtract appropriated fund balance, that is in our budget document of 645. And then, any encumbrances that are open at the end of the year, we're allowed to carry those encumbrances over. And there's a reserve established for those because we place a lot of orders in June and we can't just liquidate them because they're outstanding. So, they're allowed to be carried over from one year to the next. They're already been approved by the voters the previous year, so that's why you could carry them over. You're increasing the budget, but in an approved way because these are already approved from the prior year. And then, that leaves us with our 4%. And the more technical term is unappropriated fund balance as of June 30th, 2019.
Hey, Ann, just before you move on, just remind me what the line item appropriated fund balance refers to?
Appropriated fund balance is really a planned amount that's unspent. It's, we started using it when we were really, had a lot of budget cuts at the beginning of the gap elimination adjustment. We had extra fund balance at that time. It was a surplus fund balance. We appropriated that to the budget and it's been in there ever since. And because we do have fund balance available and we're able to fund our reserves at the end of each year, we're able to use it. Someday, I hope that our revenue stream is such, or our expenditures can be reduced so much that that can be decreased and eventually disappear. Because someday, we're going to be dipping into that appropriated fund balance. It's a revenue plug, so to say, of fund balance that's appropriated. And then, we're going to have to really look at what budget cuts to equal that are going to be. So, we just, every year, I know we talk about it. We haven't had the opportunity. And certainly, with what's happening with our revenue upcoming, it's not the year to talk about it, but you should always keep your eye on that.
Yep, thank you.
So, then, we start with that, beginning fund equity. And we simply add our revenues for the whole year and subtract our expenditures. And if it's a positive amount, then our fund equity increases. This year, we have a large positive fund equity increase. And that's because of, as Dr. Benante referred to earlier, there was a lot of expenditures, mostly with electricity and fuel oil and overtime that we did not pay. So, we have some, some overage there. That brings us to our total fund equity of 630, 2020. So, what I'm going to subtract from that is what we already know. We have our reserves, and that's that total that I referred to earlier. We have our appropriated fund balance of 645. And we have encumbrances which are around 650. I haven't finished the audit yet. That could change, but it's not going to substantially change what we're talking about as far as funding reserves and the surplus that we have. So, now we have a fund balance of $1,648,428. That, that is really what our discussion should focus on. So, there are some recommended uses of that available fund balance. The first thing that the board typically does every year is to make the school lunch fund whole from last year's audit. So, there's a deficit as of 630, 19 of $92,000 in the school lunch fund. We could pay that off so that we would just be dealing with this year's deficit, and there will be, especially large, since we really didn't have any sales in the cafeteria since mid-March. So, it puts us in another situation. And we continued to pay our staff and our staff did come in, certain members of the cafeteria came in during the shutdown every day to, to provide meals to families that needed it.
And just, just on that point, I just want to make sure I clarify. So, staff costs for, are considered within the school lunch fund?
I'm sorry.
Staff, staff costs?
Staff costs for the cafeteria?
Are considered in the fund?
Are considered in that, yes.
Thank you.
It's, it's charged to the school lunch fund, so we get a true cost of operating the lunch fund. But it's a deficit, mostly because of the benefits that are attributable to it.
So, even if, even if we choose to pay this off, next year, there'll be a deficit again?
Yes.
And it will be continuous?
Yes.
It's usually not that big, though?
It's, it's usually not that big. It's going to be all of that this year and maybe a bit more. So, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, because of sales. Yeah, totally, got it.
Hey, Ann, typically each year, do we pay off the full balance as opposed to carrying it forward?
Yes, otherwise, it just grows and grows. So, many years ago, say, many years ago, like I've been here for 50, right? But when I, when I got here, the transfer to the school lunch fund was bigger. That was one of the budget cuts because at the time, benefits weren't as high as they are now and food costs weren't as high as they are now. So, that, we were able to drop that transfer to the school lunch fund and it's $20,000 in the base budget right now. If that popped back up, if we were able to, and every year just put it in the base budget, we wouldn't have a deficit, but it'd still be the same thing. Are you going to transfer at the beginning of the year? Are you going to transfer the year later after the audit? You're still, it, it really costs the general fund about $100,000 to maintain the school lunch.
Oh, and Ann, I'm just going to reiterate. I know we said this in years past, but this comes up in our annual audit. This issue, and one of the things the auditors are always careful to remind us, and I think we want to remind the public, is this is not a situation that's particular to Haldane. It is a situation that is common to school districts for exactly all the reasons that Ann just listed. This is not something that we're doing, it's not that we need to be doing something differently, it is just the fact of, of running the lunch program, right, Ann?
Absolutely. And food costs, you know, have risen dramatically. We, we do a lot of the, the fresh produce. We get compliments from the state on our menu and to the extent that we go for the food that we, that we do feed the students. But, I mean, I know when I go to the grocery store, I'm leaving with three bags and I'm like, oh my, did I leave a bag? I spent a lot of money and I've got, I have a lot, I don't have a lot here. $50,000 to reduce the tax rate. Later in the, the presentation, I do have a slide that shows the, the tax rate increase we talked about at budget time, what it was when I got the final assessments for Phillips Town, and what this $50,000 transfer will do to the tax rate increase. Again, these are all just recommendations to use that available fund balance, based on what, in my conversations with the Controller's Office and the state and other business officials of what we think is coming in the next couple of years. We know that the effects of the pandemic are not just going to go away. When there's a vaccination, we're going to feel this. And we think it's probably similar to what happened with the gap elimination. That could be an issue. Already, the state has, last week, I was notified that they're withholding 20% of our state aid payments. And in some cases, they're delaying the entire state aid payment. We don't have a cash flow issue, so I'm not worried about that because in a week, we're going to start getting tax revenue. But the threat of withholding our state aid, whether it's a cut or a delay, we don't know yet, but it's, it's starting already. Last year, the board established the TRS Reserve, which was a new reserve that was offered. Before that, it was only the employees' retirement system that we could make provision for. We have $75,000 in it right now. Increasing it $100,000 could help us for spikes over the next year or two, depending on the effects of any, on, you know, whatever the stock market's going to do that affects the TRS portfolio. That's where our contribution rates could go up. Right now, they're at 9.5% of salaries. It would be over $150,000 if that jumped to 12.5, which it has been in the past. Our new reserve, which we have zero in right now, but it was established, I think it was in June of this past year, for liability reserve. And those are for any settlements that the district might have that would not be covered by insurance, or it could be deductibles from our insurance if there were, was any litigation. And $150,000 would be reasonable to put into that reserve. That would leave us with an undesignated fund balance of $1,256,218. So, now we're at the bottom of your sheet. When I subtract out our 4% allowed, we still have surplus undesignated fund balance of $272,018. So, the state and the Governor's Office and the Controller's Office have not given school districts any mechanism to take their surplus fund balance, which is over and above our 4% that we're allowed to have, and carry it over. So, what's important here is we have this surplus fund balance for a reason. It's because we didn't spend all of our budget last year. But it's not a windfall because we're already spending for 2021. There's a lot of expenses that we're budgeting for that, you know, we're being careful in what we spend, but we already know we're probably going to need more staff. The human resource costs, as you know, are 75% of our budget. So, when you add a position and benefits onto that, $272 doesn't really go that far. But like I said, and I also spoke to our auditor and our attorney many times over this. Because there's no mechanism and we're funding legitimate reserves to protect ourselves for the next couple of years, we know that we need these funds for 2021. So, that brings me to having the surplus greater than the 4% is going to be an audit finding on the financial statements. And I'm not happy about that.
Like, this is an example of, for me, of like, the two, the angel and the demon sitting on, Ann shoulders one saying, this is the right thing to do, and Ann, I can't let this happen.
There were many conversations because I did not want this to happen. I, I love saying, there's no management letter this year, but there'll be a management letter this year. And in full transparency, it'll be in our financial statements, our management letter. I'm going to have to do a corrective action plan. When I do the submittal for our annual expenses, it's going to be on the ST3. And it's even going to be on next year's property tax report card. So, I'm not happy about that. I really am not. If they had, if, um, any agency had, you know, maybe an executive order saying, we're going to lift that 4% cap, we wouldn't have the, the messages that are going to come up whenever I enter. It could. It could, but we're getting down the line now. There are districts that have completed their audit. Ours just happens to be later in the year. And our June receivables from the state, they're withholding 20% of that. So there are districts that have claimed revenue that now they have to amend their financial statements already to reduce their, the revenue of last year by 20%. So the, you know, the ripple effect of all of this, it, you know, it hits everywhere and it's hitting our financials and it'll still be looking at us next year in the budget when we approve the property tax report card. But, um, the auditor, auditor and our attorney have assured me. It's legitimate and reasonable. They don't know a school district that, that is not in this situation. And it's really an easy corrective action plan because probably by, you know, by the time we're through the first 120 days of school, we're going to be, you know, over this, uh, this surplus. We're going to, we're not going to have it. So this is just, um, an example of what the $50,000 towards the tax levy can do. Over budget development time, we were at 3.3 at the tax cap for the percentage increase to the tax rate. And we don't really know the tax rate until the assessments come in, in early August. When those rates or those taxable assessed values came in, that made the tax rate increase 2.21%. For every $50,000 that you apply to reduce the levy, you get about a quarter percent reduction in the increase. So giving $50,000 will bring you to less than 2% increase in the tax rate to 1.96% increase.
Anne, if I could comment on that for a bit?
Yeah, I think that I'm done.
This is probably the one part that Anne and I struggled the most with because we're trying to circle back to a discussion that we had with the board as part of the budget development process and making a determination of what the levy, how much we were going to levy from the community last, uh, spring. So our feeling and just, I guess, trying to revisit that conversation or what we remember of it right now, it seems like a world ago, um, is that there, the board, uh, you know, was recognizing its fiduciary responsibility to the community at a time when there was increased economic stress being realized by many of the small business owners, many of, uh, many, really all individuals who, who reside in, uh, Phillips Town. So obviously the, the tax, the final assessment coming in was good news because there were some, and I believe there was one significant, one major property that was coming on to the tax rolls that was not incorporated into our initial projections, which was driving the, uh, tax, uh, max tax levy, uh, down. The use of the $50,000 to further offset a tax levy increase brings us below what many people, you know, kind of have in mind when you're establishing a, a levy limit of 2%, you know, in, in, in the levy limit era. So we see it as, uh, while we can't predict the future, you know, and the mindset that our community is going to go into next, uh, budget development cycle, we see this as being responsive potentially, uh, to the community's needs as of now and keeping the levy limit as low as possible while still providing, uh, the district with the resources that it needs in anticipation of, uh, additional costs that we're going to assume as we respond to, uh, the crisis. So while the community supported a 3.3 projected levy increase back in June with the vote, we could be in a position where we could actually levy, uh, less than 2%.
I think that's it. That is it.
What's that? Just, um, for, for, for me, this is basically, your, your recommendation of carrying over and going above the 4% is basically a construct of, we ended up with some cash because we didn't have the expenses that we thought we'd have. We are still anticipating higher expenses this year. We have no place to put it legally.
Correct.
And so we, if we put it in reserves, it is allocated and dedicated to whatever reserve we put it in, retirement, capital fund, all that sort of stuff. So we want to have it on hand. We have no piggy bank. And so the way to do that is go over the 4%. Is that?
That's correct. It's, it's the most liquid form of our surplus. If we put it into a reserve, many of our reserves, um, take, um, you know, if I put it in the capital fund, we need a referendum to use it. And there's limitations.
Yeah.
The, having it there, we'd be spending it, you know, now without having a, a hearing or attaching it to a, a use.
And Anne, in other years, we would have put it in the reserve. I mean, that's normally what we would have done. Is that right? Or, or we put in, and, and I'm sorry if I didn't follow everything. Or is the issue that we put as much as we could into reserves and this is left over? Or we chose to keep this liquid?
Right. It's, it's because of the fact that we're going to have so many unbudgeted
Yes.
expenditures for 2021. We, we want it accessible.
Yes, yes. I think that's, that's the.
That's the key difference. I think it's a good question. We're likely to have a recommendation before the board. I'd say by the end of September, that will easily account for the $270,000 that's remaining right here.
Right. So in years past, then, you know, she might have, you know, Anne might be here saying, let's put $250,000 into the TRS retirement reserve, you know? Right, or capital, right.
That's, that's, that's what I thought, but I also just wanted to restate that.
Right. And it wouldn't have been this high. You know, we're funding, usually we have about 250,000 to put in reserves. And that's what we do, but we have this surplus. You know, I could say very easily, you know, hey, let's put it all in a reserve. And then, you know, January, we're really close, we're dipping into our 4%, which could happen. And, you know, next week, there could be enough outcry from school districts and auditors and lobbying that they'll come up with a, maybe they'll lift that 4% cap for this year. That would be great. That's what they should do.
Can they call it a COVID reserve?
They.
Right? And that would just cover it?
Right. Right. But I think what happened is, from what I see where things are, are very reactive, nobody thought about this. And who could make the decision, you know, to waive the 4% or to create a COVID reserve? Nobody was wrapping their head around that. But now the audits are being finalized and all of these bad marks are showing up on someone's audit. So there still could be, there still could be a mechanism that's put in place. And then that 272 becomes allowed. Part of the allowed.
So remind me what the 20% number is again, if we don't get the state aid?
It depends on what they take 20% of. If it's foundation aid or if it's all aids, including formula aids, it could be anywhere from 300 to $600,000.
Anne, I have a question. Do we have a mechanism for a school lunch reserve fund?
We do not. No, unless we just make it again, part of the budget and increase that line item
Yeah.
each year. But then it increases the budget and we have to have the revenue to match for it.
Okay. I mean, my sense is that, you know, this is not a normal, there's nothing normal about what's happening here. And that desperate times cause for desperate measures. And if we need to go above the 4% to stay, uh, fiscally flexible, then, um, it's worth the little slap on the wrist.
That's exactly. How my conversations with the partner at the audit firm and the attorney ended with.
I think this is just like, we've got your back. Like, understand that this, this may, this may haunt your nights, but I think for me, the theory of the case continues from the spring when, when we went into budget negotiations and development, which is, we knew that we needed to create as much budget flexibility for this year as possible for un, any number of unanticipated expenses and the lack of revenue, which we still are, are not privy to. So this is the same process. I just want, and I, I really appreciate the fact that you're invest, reinvesting back into the community on the levy. Remind me, my sense is that, that, that reinvestment reduces the tax levy. So that will be the base levy against which we will be starting next year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right. So we wouldn't want to continue to pull down that tax rate even more because then we're ending up in the situation we talked about in the spring where you're penalizing the district into the future by that, the amount of money. Or you're, you're creating, you're not enabling future financial flexibility.
Right. It's a multi-year decision.
Yep.
Because it's going to affect your tax levy limit forward.
That's important. That $50,000 is not just a this year $50,000 investment. It's an ongoing $50,000 investment or, or a non-taxing over the course of the next, into perpetuity that we're making.
And funding these, the particular reserves that we've recommended are recognizing that this pandemic, the effects of it aren't going to just affect 2021. You know, we might be having a conversation next year with, you know, if we close down again, we could have surplus again and then see how that's going to affect going forward.
I mean, one of the things I want to say is quite honestly, I, I know this is unfortunate and Anne, it's really hard for you, but, but we are so fortunate. There are districts throughout the country that cannot open, right? That are relying on, on virtual learning, not just because the rates are high, but because they have not funded their public school system well enough to support the basic health and safety needs that are in place. There are districts throughout the country, millions and millions of children won't go to school this year because as a society, we haven't funded our public schools adequately. We're lucky to, we are truly lucky to be in this position, in my opinion.
I absolutely agree. We, you know, I'm, I really, you know, trying to make a little light of, you know, the fact that we have, oh boy, we have extra money, you know? How, how terrible is that? But there's a reason why. And, um, it, it's just, you know, how it unfolded.
I don't want to say lucky, I should say fortunate. We are truly fortunate. It wasn't luck. It was, it's, it's good fortune and, and planning and, and, and many other things. But we, we are fortunate to be in this situation.
Yes.
So you know, we did that chart that said that if we approve this amount, how much dollar to dollar it's going to be for your houses? When it goes down to 1.6, do we, do we have that number, dollar to dollar?
We didn't create a new chart, but you're right. That would, we could to, to adjust it. We do think this is important to communicate, uh, that adjustment to the community because I think it's a demonstra, if the board were to accept the recommendation, uh, I think there's a demonstration in the community where, again, we're being most responsible with taxpayer dollars in how we finance the school for our needs, both those known and unknown. But at the same time, we're being extremely cognizant that there is increased financial stress by many, um, or that many are realizing and we're not over funding, um, you know, the school by way of returning $50,000 of it back to the community. That's what we're doing, yeah. We could come up with that figure. Anne might be even able to do it by hand.
Go back, I, I can. I'm going to create a new, um, it has to be a new chart because that is using last year's taxable assessed value and equalization rate. So the whole thing changed. You can't just go in and change because what produces that return of the number that you're looking for changes in the formula. So I, I will do a new one.
That 2% threshold, it's an important, there's important psychological significance for that for, for really good reasons, right? For folks that aren't in the weeds about this, being under that 2%, I think is, is, well, you know, not a huge decrease, right? Which we talked about it. I, I do think it's an important psychological threshold for folks.
And I think at this point, most people have forgotten about the budget vote and what it meant and what number we were at. And they all, most people supported it. It's like, it's like they've put it away.
Right.
So I do think it would take a significant communication, like a deliberate communication to say, there was fund balance, there was extra money, we're giving it back to the taxpayer. And just being very deliberate about that. Okay, so it sounds like the board supports the recommendations from Anne and the administration. So going into number nine. Ms. Dino?
Number nine. Thank you. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the use of excess fund balance for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020 in the following manner. Transfer to offset the 2020-2021 tax levy, $50,000. Transfer to school lunch fund, $92,210. Transfer to TRS Retirement Reserve Subfund, $100,000. And transfer to liability reserve, $150,000.
May I have a motion, please? Any discussion? Thank you to Anne and Dr. Benanti for their work. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, tax rolls.
So going to get out the appropriate tax warrant here.
And Anne reminded me, this is a roll call vote.
Okay, so there's, I have to read something to put the $50,000 in. So I have to read something more than what's on there. So, um, whereas the Board of Education was authorized at the annual school meeting to raise for the current budget of 2020-2021 school year, a sum not to exceed $25,266,610. Whereas the Board of Education was further authorized to raise for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, a sum not to exceed $73,150 for the Julia L. Butterfield Memorial Library Budget. Whereas the Board of Education has applied $50,000 of unexpended surplus funds in determining the amount of the school tax levy. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of school, the Board of Education hereby approves the resolution to confirm the tax rolls, authorize the tax levy and approve the tax warrant for the 2020-2021 school year.
May I have a motion, please?
And this is a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
But, but do I still do?
You still have to call that.
Yeah. Okay. So may I have a motion, please?
Come on.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote whenever you're ready.
President Daley.
Yes.
Vice President Headland.
Yeah.
Trustee Clements.
Yes.
Trustee McNaul.
Yes.
Trustee Parr.
Yes.
Thank you. And then we can sign this after the, the meeting.
Yeah, so we all need to sign that before we move. Thank you. Um, and there's, um, this form, Anne, that you wanted me to point out.
While we're talking about taxes, thank you. This year, uh, the bank, M&amp;T Bank, um, will not be taking walk-ins for payments on the taxes. And, um, so we have. And, um, so we have now, um, set up the option to pay by credit card or e-check online for your taxes. You have two options. Now, there's a flyer that, um, we put together that will be on the website and it will be on board docs and it will be, um, inserted into every tax bill that's mailed on August thirty-first. So we'll be busy next week stuffing envelopes with the insert. There are two options. You can continue to mail your check to the lockbox, M&amp;T Lockbox, which is in Buffalo. Or there are instructions on that sheet where you can sign on to taxlookup.net. You can pay with an e-check or a credit card. There is a fee that applies. However, you can't make a partial payment if you're paying online. It has to be an in-full payment. And that is, again, another COVID effect. So, thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Um, is there any communication from the public? Are there any board reflections they would like to share?
Well, I have a board reflection that I've been meaning to say all summer. So I'm going to make it quick, though. So I walk my dog every evening through the streets of, of Nelsonville and Cold Spring. Not so much because it's been hot. And it was so cool to see all the signs for the fifth grade graduates and the eighth grade graduates and the high school graduates. And I mean, I know, like, I mean, obviously, our public school students are dispersed throughout the community, but it was such a reminder, and that's just fifth, eighth and high, and seniors. It was such a reminder about how the district is just, just, the, it's just, I don't know, that the community were, and the district are just so entwined. I mean, it's such an obvious thing, right? Like, it's so obvious. It's such an obvious thing to say. But seeing all those signs, I'd be like, there's another one and there's another one. There's another one. There's another one. It's like, you know, it, it was just very, it was very cool for me to do that. So.
Nice. Okay. Dr. Benante, do you have any final thoughts?
I don't. I know we're transitioning to our retreat.
Yeah. Besides, oh, we thought this meeting would take an hour.
I know. It's two hours. So one hour off the retreat agenda. I guess we'll try to figure out between now and our walk over to the Maple Mary Building.
I was just thinking, it's not on here. Do I need to make, make a motion to go into?
We do. Uh, so you're actually going to have executive session for purposes of the board retreat.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Sorry, we didn't talk about that.
So, good. Then I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of the board retreat. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Cecilia.